... indivisible, with liberty of justice for all.
Couple of quick announcements here. The good news is, the city recently received a couple of very large and important grants. The East End Rehab, the rehabilitation project was funded for $296,349 from the Small Cities Development Block Grant Program, which is HUD's funds, HUD funds which go through the Minnesota Department of Economic Development. We also received another large grant for $322,671. It's a cleanup grant for the Main Square Development Block. So, congratulations to the Community Development Office for a job well done in securing these grants and look forward to having the work done. Also, I want to thank everybody that was involved, the city staff and all the volunteers with the Live at the Levy event, which was held a week ago Sunday, and to the thousands of people that showed up and enjoyed a day of really good music and all kinds of fun stuff. So, thank you to those who were involved. And just on a little more personal note, express condolences to Councilwoman Pam Idon for passing of her mother last week. Sorry to hear that. And that's all I have. Has the city manager, if he has anything?
One other grant, Your Honor, to report, and it's the Initiative Foundation has granted $10,000 to our co-work space, which hopefully will be opening soon. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is a hearing on the Johnson &amp; Schofield, Inc. Comp Plan Amendment Request to Change from Limited Residential to Low Density Residential.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The item in front of you tonight, the change from limited residential to low-density residential for land use designation pertains to property at Zero Garvin Heights Road in this general area here. It's adjacent to the Meadows subdivision and across County Road 44 from the Crestview subdivision. The current designation that the Comprehensive Plan gives to this property is limited residential that would facilitate development of homes on large lots that are not connected to city sewer and water. The petitioner is proposing to change that designation to low-density, which would facilitate lots on traditional subdivision-sized lots of land, and they would be connected to city sewer and water. Redesignation of the land would facilitate future rezoning of the property and also a future subdivision of the property. Preliminary concept plans for the subdivision show between 70 to 75 lots on this property. Development of the property would follow the general pattern of development south of the Mississippi River Valley, starting with the Skyline subdivision in 1972, the Windcrest subdivision, which was approved in phases between 1970 and 1996, the Crestview subdivision in 2002, and most recently, the Meadows subdivision in 2007. At the end of May, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and found that the amendment that's requested is consistent with the policies and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. Planning Commission also found that since the Comp Plan was adopted in 2007, there has been adjacent residential development, and the 2016 housing study completed for the City of Winona confirms the need for additional housing units potentially supplied by future subdivision of this property. And finally, the amendment, the change in land use designation, will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So, tonight for this option, or for this item, Council could approve the request with a motion to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and introduce the resolution in your packets for approval. We'll note that a supermajority of five votes is required for this action. You could also deny the request, modify the request, and table it if more information is needed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carlos. It's a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Brian Woodley, and I work for Johnson Schofield Land Surveying and Engineering. We're the firm that's helping Pro-Gro Leasing with this project, and really just here for any questions that you might have. Carlos put together a great packet that kind of spells everything out. The end game of this whole project is, like he said, to have buildable lots in this subdivision. This is just the first step to us getting there. We'll be up in front of you again a couple more times, but this is the first step to allow us to put something together to bring before planning and council, so that's all I've got unless you have questions.
Questions from council? Oh, Al.
In the map that was included, you indicated construction Phase 1.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming all of the permits, et cetera, go forward, how many lots and when do you anticipate?
Like Carlos said, it's just a concept right now, but we have a total of 73 lots on that map, and it would be phased, that first phase.
It's in a packet, I was just interested in the timeline.
Yeah, it's in your packet, but the amount of phasing, it'll just depend on the market and stuff like that, so.
Of course.
But the idea is to, as soon as all the approvals are gotten, then to move forward right away.
I have a question about the proposed city park. Is that a requirement to include city park, and is that something the city's going to be maintaining then?
Yeah, that is.
Our code requires either a portion of land dedicated to a park for a new subdivision or a fee in lieu of, and so we'll take a look at that when the subdivision application comes through.
Are there any concerns about adding on another park to maintain?
The Planning Commission and the Park and Recreation Department will review the proposal as part of the subdivision application, and they'll issue a recommendation that'll follow through when the preliminary plan comes before council.
Paul.
Back to the park. So, I was out there today looking at this, and so related to the park, I think it would be, you know, those are good questions, and we need to consider that. That proposed area for the park is a fairly steep slope. There isn't, I can't see how we would use that as a park unless we put in a mountain-like trail. And so, if we consider a park, I, that's a fairly good chunk of property. I would, I would, I would be welcome a smaller piece that would be more accessible and usable by the neighborhood. That's my stance.
Noted. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? George?
I think a lot of times, too, you know, they're required to set aside park land or else they'll just pay the funds on it, and sometimes it is not developed, and sometimes the neighbors right there may take care of it, just maybe mowing the grass and having something very, very minimal out there, so.
All right, well, thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak to this issue? One more time, anybody here wish to speak to this? Hearing none. Declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion from council?
Mayor, I move that we adopt and incorporate the findings of the Planning Commission as set forth above, and the council hereby amends the Comprehensive Plan adopted by the City of Winona in 2007 to designate the real property located at Zero Garvin Heights Road as low-density residential.
I'd second that.
Okay. It was a motion by George and seconded by Pam. Any further discussion?
No, I appreciate the company bringing this forward, I see Mr. Brenner is here, but I do have a question, you know, since the other designation was onsite utilities, this one would require us to extend city utilities, and I guess I would be curious as to the plan to do that and the cost to do so going forward.
City sewer and water, already run by the development, past the development, actually. So, there would be a hookup at Garvin Heights Road, but it will be up to the developer to provide all the utilities within the subdivision. Of course, they would have to be constructed to our specifications, but there would also be a sewer and water access charge, sack and whack fee, that would be requested, or that the developer would have to pay.
Thank you. That's what I thought. Appreciate it.
Paul?
Yeah, and then I noticed we have, looked up there, likely in the Meadows, there are two catchment basements, basins for runoff, so I know it's not going to run back to the Windcrest side, it's going to go to the backside. Will there be plans for an additional one or two catchment basins?
That's something that we'll address when the subdivision comes before the Planning Commission and City Council.
Anything else? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 2.2 is a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of the platted utility easement on the Creekwood subdivision.
All right, public hearing. Declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody here that wants to address this issue? Anybody here wish to speak? One final opportunity, anybody wish to speak? Hearing none. Public hearing's closed. Is there a motion?
I would so move to introduce the attached ordinance to vacate the alley.
I'd second that.
Motion by George and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is a request to close West King Street for the King Street Block Party to be held on Saturday, July 21st.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kerry, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.2 is the docking request for the American Duchess and American Queen. The Duchess will be docked on August 8th and September 1st, and the American Queen on September 15th.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Paul. Just note, this is the inaugural run for the American Duchess, so it should be fun to have her in the city. And have they said anything about garbage? That's not in the request, maybe it doesn't need to be, but they're not forgetting about it.
I'll ask.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.3 is the sign and banner schedule for the second half of the year.
Move to approve the list.
Second.
Motion by Kerry, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.4, reappointments to the Joint Airport Zoning Board.
Move to approve these reappointments.
Second.
Motion by Kerry and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.5 is an application for an on-sale 3-2 malt liquor license for Rocko's Pub and Pizza to be used at their new location, 477 West Fifth Street.
Move to approve.
Second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Do we know when they're opening? No?
I heard that the last thing to do is to get their license.
They should be posted the third.
Tomorrow.
All right. Well, let's get it approved, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.6 is the Winona Public Library Street Closure Request for August 8th.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Al?
Yeah, your, the request includes closure for the driveway on the parking lot side here where the staff parks. Wondering about the library, or the driveway that's across the street on Johnson Street on the east side.
For the church?
Yeah, for the church parking lot, I'm just curious as to...
That was closed, if they followed last year's program.
That was closed?
Yes.
Well, I...
It's only an hour and a half. Well, no, it's eight to two, isn't it?
Yeah.
The events.
It's eight to two, and we're concerned about that. I mean, there's limited access to begin with, and then if the alley is blocked between the Friendship Center and Winona State's Center there, that presents a problem, but if it's only for one day, I guess, just so people are aware and the church is notified of that closure.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.7 is a request for a parking plan for Mark Street between Huff and Main.
I would move to introduce the attached ordinance.
I would second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.8 is the license agreement from Zayo for colocation of small cell wireless on city light poles.
I would move to direct administration to execute the attached license agreement between the City of Winona and Zayo would be in order.
I'd second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Chris?
Mayor and Council, this item has three basically things to it, and I don't see Brian here tonight, but the, you have a master license agreement for the provider, which is the master colocation agreement, which is the first document, and then attached to that, there are two supplemental agreements, and the two supplemental agreements, I talked to Brian earlier this week, I thought those were going to be part of the packet tonight. I really think you have to approve those, and those aren't, those aren't here, they're not part of the packet, so, because those have the meat of this. So, you can certainly approve those documents as to their form, but you don't actually have the two location agreements for where these things are going to be, so I don't think you can approve that. I think you can approve the form of this agreement.
I have some questions about this project, and one is, you know, they're locating one downtown on Johnson Street. Is it necessary to be there? I mean, do they have option, other options for where to put it? And I guess my rationale is that, I mean, as we're developing the downtown historic district, you know, and hopefully we replace some of these modern light posts with more decorative lighting, I mean, do we want 33-foot towers down there? You know, is that, is that even an option for us to decide whether or not they can go there?
Mayor and Council, I mean, I'm just a lawyer on this, so I don't have any of the details on that, that aspect of it. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know what that proposal is, I don't know what the engineering is for it, so...
We, we have tried, Your Honor, from the staff level, to fight this thing, to drag our feet. We're doing this kicking and screaming because we think they're going to, they're going to blanket the city with these. There's some applications that make sense, there's some areas in this town that don't have good cell coverage, and this is a good application for that. They've got a law passed through the Minnesota Legislature this year that really ties our hands, and we're not able to do much of anything with respect to how much we can charge them or their location, and so what you have before you is really, you know, the best that we can do.
How time-sensitive is this? Since we don't have all the information and there are concerns, obviously, we're going to have to vote for something, but do we have a couple more weeks?
We could table it, don't we?
That's my question, is do we have, do we have time? I would recommend, as the attorney said, approve the form on the motion, and then we'll bring back the, the other two documents. I apologize, I didn't know there was more that was needed from this because Brian never suggested that more was needed for the packet, so we'll get that ironed out and bring it to the next meeting.
What would happen if we voted it down?
Well, they could probably sue us.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the problem is, Councilor Craig, the, and Council, Mayor, the, the state law basically says these things are, are permitted use pretty much everywhere.
A utility.
So, so our ability to say no is pretty limited. I mean, unless we can really establish a public health, safety, and welfare reason, like, for example, you're locating right next to our 911 tower, and it's going to interfere with our, you know, ability to broadcast, so it's, it's really pretty limited from that standpoint. You know, like I said, like, like Manager Sarby said, the, the legislature really, really tied our hands, they pretty much took away our local authority to really regulate our right-of-way, and so our, our issue is really with what the state law is, and, and now it's basically its application to us, so...
So, you don't think excluding them from a historic district would be acceptable?
I don't, I don't think we can exclude them from a historic district. I think we have some, some ability to have them moved to the next block, you know, I mean, but it's, again, it's very limited, and there has to be some, some good rationale for why we would want to have that location be in a different place.
Well, I mean, this particular case, I think one block south would be an advantage instead of having it, you know, adjacent to a national register property on the edge of the district and, you know...
I mean, that...
Blocking the view of another historic building to court out, so...
And it certainly, and to get to Councilor Craig's earlier question about the timing of this, too, we have 90 days from when an application is submitted, and so I forget when exactly this application was submitted, but we certainly have some additional time.
I have, I have some questions also, and I do wish Brian were here if he, if he's the person that knows most about this. So, this is cellphone-only? Is this cellphone and Wi-Fi?
So, we just withdraw and bring it back when he's here.
It's a cellphone, cellphone service.
It's only cellphone.
Okay. And my other, my other concern is that I'd like to see a long-range plan for, as you said, one of you said that you suspect that they would like to have a whole lot more of these. Well, I would like to know more about that plan before we go ahead.
Mayor and Council, the, the problem with this is that these, these proposals are submitted by companies on an individual basis, and again, the state law basically says we have to permit them. What we've, what's in your packet tonight is about the extent of what we can do in terms of saying there's a colocation agreement, and these other agreements, you basically have to comply with our right-of-way ordinance. We get to charge you a pittance for a fee because we're also limited by state statute in terms of what the fee could be, which is laughable, really, in terms of how this goes. So, in terms, they've taken away our local authority, and they're taking, they've taken away our ability to charge fees, and there's really not a lot you can do, but at a minimum, we should at least have their full proposal in front of you so that you at least know what they're doing.
And there's no end to the contract either. It looks like it goes on...
No, that's right.
Forever.
No, it's, it's a horrible law, and it was, it was written in a very one-sided way.
And if the company goes away or gets acquired, and the tower has an issue, it's going to be hard to track somebody down to take it, take it down, remove it, repair it.
George?
So, what is the best recommendation tonight? There's a motion on the floor, made and seconded. Is it best I withdraw that motion, table till next meeting, till we have more information, or what we have in front of us is going to require a vote?
You, you can approve the master location agreement, which has attached to it the supplemental agreement form, which basically, but it's really the supplemental agreements, the two supplemental agreements, which are the approvals of the two antenna locations, those would be things you would not be approving. So, your motion would basically to be, or, or maybe the better way to do it is, we're not approving Zayo's request, we're just approving the form of master colocation agreement and the supplemental agreement form, and that's all you're doing tonight. And then presumably, two weeks from now, they can bring back what the full proposal is supposed to be.
Or we could, or we could just table it and have a full discussion of the whole thing in two weeks.
You bet. You could just postpone it till next meeting, too.
Hey, Mayor, I would withdraw my motion, if that's okay with, who seconded that?
I did not.
With Paul seconded, you accept that, and table it till next meeting or whenever the information is available to us.
Yeah, the motion would be to postpone until...
Postpone until there's more information given, so, or all the information that we need.
Okay. We'll vote on that.
Is there a section?
I thought there was, okay, Paul.
Please.
Right.
And then Al, and then...
I'm sorry.
I was trying to, there is an item in here on page nine about an interference study, and I think that given our situation and our crowded downtown, it might be worth considering that as a request to the company. Also, there's also on page 11, a note that says they can assign their entity to anybody they wish at any time without city approval. Again, from what I read, this is something the city can't contest, and I'm, I'm curious about how these kinds of small cell entities are connected. In other words, do they have to bring cabling, power, et cetera, along and through a street, a public right-of-way? If, you know, if they have to do that, what, what recourse does the city have to make sure it's done in a, a good manner for our public entities?
Mayor and Council, they have to follow our right-of-way ordinance, and it wasn't too long ago where we approved a new right-of-way ordinance with a number of requirements in that. The, the form of colocation agreement and the supplemental agreement that are in the packet tonight, those are documents that, that we drafted, and so those are our documents. Those, those are as good as we can do in the regulatory framework that we are in.
And then just another comment here, as we're apparently having our hands tied in here, apparently, they will take down the existing street light on that pole and then replace it once the tower, the new tower, is built. Is there any chance that when they do that, they can install, or we can install as a city, LED lighting facilities going forward, just as a small compensation for the inconvenience of having these things changed? Okay, I'm getting a nod from our Public Works Director about that, so I'm happy to see that going.
They discussed already that.
Oh, yes, okay.
And they're all integrated.
Okay. Paul?
So, I really, I'm just at a loss that the State Historical Preservation Commission kind of got sidetracked, or didn't have a, a word on this. I mean, so, thinking about it in these terms, it does seem odd that you could plop one of these down in, in a historical location where we have very strict ordinances about the facade, the, the building character, the renovation, all of that, and they could plop one of these down right in front of one of those structures.
The only aspect of that, that the city can regulate, is we can require a conditional use permit, and we have that in our code, so we can require a conditional use permit. Again, the conditions, though, I mean, it's a little bit of a paper tiger because the conditions are very limited in terms of what can happen in there. In terms of the passage of this legislation at, at the state Capitol, you know, again, you've got a lot of big-money companies here that lobbied this and got this passed.
Now, does this only apply to city-owned lights, light fixtures?
Correct.
So, they, do they have a separate agreement with Excel, for example, or...
Certainly possible that they do.
Okay.
At the end of the day, Excel still has to comply with our right-of-way ordinance, though. So, I mean, they're, they're still operating in the public right-of-way, which means they still have to meet the requirements of our right-of-way ordinance, but again, you know, the regulations on this is, is pretty limited. I mean, we have some ability to regulate for public health, safety, and welfare, we have some ability to regulate for, you know, screening and aesthetics. for, you know, screening and aesthetics, but that's about it. And height, height is another piece.
All right. Just a comment, I did some research on Zayo Group, and they're a multi-billion-dollar entity in, in the fiber communications world. Their offices are in Denver, and the West Coast, and in London. Just a point of information going forward. So, I mean, you know, they're a solid company. I guess that would be the good of this. But, again, the questions we have are pretty specific, and let's hopefully get some answers.
And, and obviously, and the, the need for telecommunications technology is something important, so I mean, this is, you know, this isn't, you know, the evil empire that is coming here. I mean, it's, you know, these are good things, we need these types of things. It's really just the, where the placement of these, and, and how it's gonna best serve the community.
George?
What if a private industry would wanna place one of these towers on their property? Would there be any regulations that they'd have to follow with the city, or, or anyone at all, or?
Yeah, I don't know. Carlos, do you wanna address that, or?
For these on private property, we need to create specific regulations for private property. Right now, we just have regulations for the small wireless in public right-of-way.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I just wanted to say, I guess I agree with everybody else about this. We don't really have much of a choice. None of us like mandates as they come down from up north. But, they often come, and we have to deal with them. My concern is, yes, they're a massive company. My concern is they're a massive company, and does it take, we take a look at telecom and all of that stuff. It's what we need, it's, it's, you know, you can't get by without it. But those companies have a tendency to change on a continuous basis, and then, if there is an issue, who do you deal with, so. But, a lot of talk, and it does sound like we have a lot of choice. But, at least, we can wait a couple of weeks to get more intel.
Well, I'm planning on making a call to State Historic Preservation Office, and just find out what they're, what they know about this, too. All right, we have a motion, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item 3.9 is Anthem Skate Park Report by Zach Craig.
Good afternoon. I'm Zach Craig from Anthem Skate Park and Board Shop. So, to start off this report, give a little bit of history. We opened up in October 2015 after the closure of Winona's 4.8 Skate Park. Originally built as, in a temporary location as Phase One, but in its fifteen years failed to go beyond the Phase One planning. In the fifty years since skateboarding has started, it has gone from a niche activity with a less than desirable reputation, reputation, to a legitimate sport scheduled to be in the next Olympic Games. And Winona, like many other cities, has, has learned that when skate facilities are not provided, the city itself becomes a skate park. So, we're fortunate that we have a skate park in our city. So, our, just to briefly go over, our sales have increased from last year, both in the three areas of entry fees, retail, and concessions. Some specific numbers to mention, our daily entries in the first year were 1,576 people, and in the last year has been 2,200 people. And our members in our first year were 300, and since opening now, we have grown to 687 dollars, uh, sorry, 687 members. So, our, our skate park, you can see, has been very well-received, both by locals and skateboarders from out of town, and our skateboarders range in age from five to sixty. And one of our focuses is creating a welcoming community, where people can come to, to hang out, whether they skate or not, create a safe place to recreate, as well as a space where skateboarders, artists, musicians can share common ground to empower artists and entrepreneurs. So, a couple of things we'd like to highlight is, on, on that note, is, one great thing that happened was Winona Anthems, a CMAC grant art project by local musician Mike Munson, where he recorded an album in Anthem, and partnered with local photographers Teddy Wachorek and Brianna Haupt, and documented a six-month period at Anthem, displayed the photos, performed the music, recorded at Anthem, and inspired by the Winona skateboarding scene at the outpost, Art of the Rural Nonprofit in downtown Winona. And we also partnered, we've been able to give, give opportunities, for example, with Sequoia Fassbender, a local Winona student who has career aspirations in rec and tourism, and she did a student internship at Anthem, where we focused on branding, marketing, and event planning, where she earned school credit by planning those things. We've continued to host competitions for last year, and we've continued our local and traveling competitive team. Right now, it consists of five skaters, three adults, and two kids. And we've, that team has competed in Winona, Rochester, Chicago, and Florida in the last year. We've held skate camps, four skate camps over the last year, and, like last year, but this year, we added a girls camp, which was a huge success. And we've had no major injuries, shoplifting, and unlike the previous skate park, we've had no major incidents requiring intervention from staff and law enforcement. We do have some struggles. The current agreement is making it prohibitive to operate. For example, we do pay, since the, the model of a private skate park in Minnesota is not the norm, where in most cases, they are more partnered with the city, and the city covers. The insurance, we as a private entity do pay $11,500 annually for our insurance. Future plans, we are hoping to make skateboarding to be more inclusive, more camps, more scholarship programs, and more traveling competitions. And at this point, we would like to request approval from the council to direct city staff to research potential future cost-saving measures.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Zach?
Well, I have a question. So, are you interested in partnering with the city to...
We are. Well, we're, we're interested in exploring options. We have started the process, looking into this with city staff, and at this point, we're asking for approval to officially move forward with that planning process.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would so move.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion by George, and seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One extension.
With one extension. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Moving on to new business, item 5.1 is to extend the cable television franchise agreement for Charter Communications. Yeah, yeah, please.
Do we have a choice?
I would motion to adopt the attached resolution.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion by George, and seconded by Jerry. Discussion?
The next phase, as was briefed a couple of months ago, it's moving forward with our, you know, we've selected a company that's gonna help us do our needs assessment. So, that process is continuing. And, you know, we'll, we'll see where that leads. But unfortunately, as that's gonna go on, we're gonna probably come back again with another extension request. It would just be nice if Charter would sit down with us and actually hammer on an agreement instead of playing these games.
All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item 5.2 is the appointment of the election judges for the 2018 elections.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is the MINDOT request for cooperative construction agreement for the Trunk Highway 61 and Huff Street project.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Discussion?
I have a question.
Paul?
Will we be seeing, or have we, already seen final design plans for, because they weren't here in the packet?
We do have those final plans within our office. They certainly are available.
I can email you a copy. I asked as well.
I'd like to see it. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item 5.4 is the authorization for professional services for the airport master plan.
Move to approve the attached resolution, authorizing the professional services for the master plan.
I'll second that.
Motion by Al, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Paul?
Um, so I don't, maybe I've been living in a cave. The runway closure, why was there a runway closure, and is, is that something we foresaw, or is evident?
Mayor, Council, yes, that was, the, the short runway, the 1735, was closed a couple of years ago as part of the, the former project. There were issues with conflict with the other runway, issues with zoning in Goodview, and additional maintenance. Typically, in Winona, 95% of the time, the main runway is the dominant wind, so the, the smaller one was not essential. Not all pilots agree with that. There was a lot of enjoyment in using the small one, but FAA thought it would be advantageous to close that one, and just have the larger, just the main runway, and keep maintaining that one. So, that's been closed for some time now.
And George, George?
Yes.
All on board with this, too?
Yes.
Yep.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item 5.5 is the environmental review requirements for the Winona HRA.
I would motion to authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate certifications, and checklists would be appropriate.
I'd second that.
Motion by George, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Pam again, I think.
Yes, well, at, at last time, when I was called upon, I had a recurring issue with geese. Now, I have a recurring issue with alleys. I have gotten a couple of more phone calls, and I haven't, haven't had time to direct them to Brian. But I'm wondering how our, how our city staff report is doing on coming back with some options for this.
It is coming.
It is coming?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. And that's what I'll tell Micah Stich once.
Paul?
Uh, well, two things. Yay, the Levy is open, and I, I was there all day at, at the, live at the Levy, and, and there were a lot of people from town there. And I've spoken to some people from town, and they're, they're psyched. They're really happy, and they're excited that there is a venue on the river. And I heard nothing but good comments. And I am a very close friend of Larry Long, and, and his comment was, they had a blast performing here, and, and they look forward to an opportunity to possibly come back. So, the musicians that I talked to were really pleased and had a good time. And on a second note, looked like the craft beer event was a big hit on Saturday, well-attended, before the rains. And that also looked like people were enjoying themselves again at the Levy.
I'll just add, too, Saturday morning, the farmer's market was back, and, and it worked really well down there. It's glad to see, glad to see a, and a good, good crowd, too. George?
Thank you. This past weekend, not this last week, weekend before, Councilman Scholmeyer and myself, we had a chance to attend a Winona County Energy Dialogue, and it was very, very interesting. And what amazed me the most is eighteen different walks of life, all different ages, and we all came to, can get, we all came together on some kind of a consensus. That was, that was very nice to see, so. Also, I just wanna, speaking of HRA, and I'd just like to say that they received a certificate of recognition. This certify, this certificate is awarded to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in recognition and sincere appreciation of your contribution and support to the Drug Court of Winona County, signed by Karen Hyder. You know, very, very well to receive that, and that is a very, very good program, and hope that those programs can keep going, so. And also, congratulations to Councilmember Scholmeyer and his wife on their 25th wedding anniversary, which is to, I know you're bashful, which is to be celebrated, I believe, this weekend?
This weekend.
So, how did she put up with you?
I'm lucky, I guess.
There you go, you got it good, boy, you're good.
Anything else, George?
No, that's enough.
Okay. Jerry?
Only one item. The Vets Memorial Committee just wanted me to publicly tell people that, yes, we agree that the flags on the flagpoles are in the poorest condition they've been in in twenty-some years. But, we have already spent the money, at close to $30,000, a massive investment. New poles, new flags, the whole bit's gonna come in, and they're of much better quality, et cetera, et cetera. So, very soon, you're gonna see the improvements. So, just hang in there.
Okay, good. Al?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Happy and safe Fourth of July coming up in a few days for everybody, and a reminder that the, speaking of Wednesday, the Winona Municipal Band will be at the Lake Park Band Shelter, their special Fourth of July concert. I understand one of the highlights, as you might expect, is "The Stars and Stripes Forever" by John Philip Sousa. So, hopefully, everybody can attend. The weather looks to be pretty good for that celebration. And I concur with the mayor, and his wishes of sympathy to Councilperson Iden on her loss and her family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are eight items. Approval of the minutes from June 18th, the final adoption of an ordinance to vacate the alley in Block 29, the ordinance to vacate the alley in Block 48, an ordinance to establish Fourth Street as a through highway, and establish a four-way stop at Zumbro, an ordinance for no parking on Beer Street, and a claim against the city by Stacy Mount Arnold, a claim by Michael Doring, and a claim by Scott Heftman.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?